This is two.
I'd like to call to order the regular village board meeting for the village of Shorewood on July the 24th in the year 2012. Our invocation tonight be given by Pastor George Kleeman of the Hope Lutheran Church. Pastor?
Before I begin, can we have a moment of silence for all of those who were affected by the events in Aurora, Colorado? Lord, ruler of the universe, we come to you tonight with hearts saddened by recent events in our country. We ask you to give comfort, peace, and hope to those who have been impacted by the events in Colorado. We also come to you and ask for rain and moderation in the weather that besets our nation. Continue to be with and bless our community. Bless the board as they serve the people and manage the resources of our village. Be with all emergency and police personnel that they keep us safe and protect us. Be with all those who are in our armed forces. Let war cease and let our military people return home to peace and normalcy. As the summer draws to a close and school begins, bless and be with all students, teachers, administrators of our schools. Allow our children to grow in knowledge and in good citizenship. We give you thanks for your many blessings, and we ask for your continued guidance in our lives. We pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Julie Roelkall, please.
Anderson.
Here.
Brockman.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Gronn.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Mayor Chapman.
Records show a quorum that's present. We'll move on tonight to citizens. Are there any citizens that wish to address the village board tonight? There being none, we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of approval of the minutes of a regular meeting for June the 26th. Also, approval of the minutes of a regular meeting for July the 10th. Number three, approval of accounts payable in the amount of $495,262.55. Number four, approval of a payment in the amount of $30,061 to Ron Terrapelli Ford for the 2012 Ford F-150 for our police department. Number five, approval of a payment in the amount of $21,870.04 to Christopher Burke Engineering for Observation Services for Black Road and River Road intersections. And finally, approval of an ordinance amending the village of Shorewood Code of Ordinances with respect to the school and park, land versus cash contributions, and we would request the wave of a second read. Are there any comments, questions from any of the trustees on tonight's consent agenda? Or is there an item on the consent that a trustee would like removed for further review?
The only thing I ask a question on is item number six. Are kind of the schedules for when you get into the apartments, condos, and so forth, which back when that stuff was originally set up, you didn't have too many kids getting into them, but you're seeing a lot more in them now than what they used to be. And for the fees, it doesn't really cover that portion of it accordingly, you know?
On the spreadsheet for the amounts for the condo?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. You'd like to point it out?
I was just looking for where I had it. It shows zero for ones, I think zero for two-bedroom even for, I don't, I lost my other packet, I just threw all this stuff together. Should be here on the, where we're getting into a TAT, single-family townhomes and so forth. Like when you see where I detached two-bedroom, well, 113, well, you're, some of the other ones now, it looks like a .064, and then a three-bedroom, you've got a .212 versus a .292, which, I mean, that's getting closer. But on the apartments, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, that .05, I mean, some of these units now are getting used as basically apartments is what they're doing, some of the townhomes and so forth. That's a considerable lower when you're getting kids.
Jim, would you think that that would take a complete another study session to get something like that? Because we'd have to go back through, redo the numbers, maybe make a survey, you know?
Well, I...
We can't change it tonight. We'd have to put this under.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying I felt that should have been increased.
I'm not sure anybody was really looking at that. We were looking at more the...
The land and stuff.
The cash value of land today, and that it was unfair to bill people for $85,000 when the true value is $40.
We can always change that at a later date if we so desire.
Okay. That'll be fine.
I just have one minor correction on the minutes. Julie there? The June 26th minutes, it's just a typo, basically. The two lines up from the executive session, it describes what our grant was for, and it says, "With rest notes," N-O-T-E-S, and I believe it should be rest nodes, N-O-D-E-S. So again, it's just a typo, but I thought that might not make sense to somebody reading it in the future.
Right. Okay, Julie?
I think she stepped out.
Anderson?
We're gonna...
Somebody's gotta make a motion.
Gotta make a motion. Okay, we'll make a motion to, to pass the, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I'm unclear on number six. You want to just leave that open, pass it, and leave it open until, or amend it later and on on the apartments? Is that what you want to do?
Well, that would be a total, we'd have to rebuild the entire sheet.
Yeah, redo it when we decide to do it.
Are we gonna take it off the agenda then?
No, no, no. No. Cast it as described, but...
And then look at the land or the quantity or the number of people in the thing later? Okay.
Right.
It just needs a second read waived.
Yeah. Okay, I'll go with that. Are we gonna, Kimberly's gonna look at that and get back to us then?
Yeah, we'll...
Look it over, make some phone calls.
Wrap it up, I don't want to forget about it, and that's all.
All right.
Second.
Second, and drop the second read, yes.
Danny made the motion, Danny Anderson, Julie, and I seconded it.
Good.
Thought I was gonna do the roll call.
There was a reason why I don't have a packet. Gonna leave it.
Roger was ready. Okay, Julie Roelkall, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Gronn?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Consent agenda stands approved. Moving on, I have no proclamations. Julie, are there any communications for the board?
I don't think there are any.
No.
I don't think so either, but it's there. She'll make them.
Okay, and are there any additional agenda items? If not, I just have one report. We had a meeting with the county. The administrator, Pro Tem, and myself, and our legal counsel, had a meeting on Monday with the county to try to finalize the jurisdictional transfer of Black Road so we can get this thing done and off the books. It looked, it was very fruitful meeting. Everybody was in agreement, once we all understood what each other one was saying. And so our council's gonna be putting that together in a form, because we need to be very careful, because the next people that pick that up may be 20, 25 years down the road. And so we need to make sure that when this thing is articulated on people, that it says exactly what we mean today, because we don't want to leave people out in the future hanging like that. So we'll be very careful, and it'll come to you, of course, and you'll get your hack at it, so, okay? But it was very fruitful meeting. We think we'll have that when, when, Roger, before the board.
Dave was going to, Dave was gonna look it over, and he had to go with state's attorney, then it'll come back to us. So hopefully, by the next meeting or not, the following first meeting.
Okay. All right. So it's coming soon. Other than that, I have nothing. We'll move on to tonight's order of business. Number one, consideration for approval of reappointment of Alan Summers and Barbara Kirkland to the police pension board for one-year terms. I had Tony check with Mr. Summers, and I talked to Cookie Kirkland. They both agreed, they would like to remain on board. And I believe they'll do a fine job in the position that they've been in for a while, and that they will remain in if the board so approves.
Yeah, I sit in with them on those meetings, and they're quite active in that committee, and they have a lot of input when they meet every quarter, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept a one-year reappointment to Alan Summers and Barbara Kirkland.
Okay. I sit on those meetings too, Dan. I'm not a member of that pension board, but I sit in just to listen to things going. I'll tell you what, of all the committees, that's the one that requires the most technical knowledge, just people have to take continuing classes, continuing education, and that's a big responsibility. They do a nice job, too. Really nice job.
Was there a second?
Any second.
Okay. Julie Roelkall, please.
Brockman?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Gronn?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Item number one stands approved. We'll move on to number two, consideration for approval of a site plan amendment for Ron Terrapelli Ford. This is Mr. Fitzgerald and Kimberly Jones.
At the July 11th regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Terrapelli Ford came forward with a proposal to amend their site plan to basically spruce up and somewhat modernize or make consistent with, you know, corporate design and everything, their facade. And although it wasn't in your packet, Kimberly had emailed everybody today with an attachment that shows the proposed new facade and everything. It basically raises the facade and the parapet up four feet over what it was before. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this and thought that it really was a nice upgrade to the current building, and unanimously recommended that the village board adopt it. If anybody has any specific questions, Kimberly's here, and also Robert, Bob Morris from Orbis Architects, so.
We got a picture of the update, because, you know, I don't get a chance to look at my email from work to here on Tuesday, so.
The only thing I didn't know on that, if that was a metallic, dealer sort of a mirrored finish or whatever, that, you know, that looked like it was a shiny...
It was metal before, and now it's gonna be like a silver, more silver metallic, I think. You got a picture of it?
Bob?
Yeah, he's got a picture.
Come on up.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Yes, it's, the current panels are like a porcelain enamel metal panel, a white finish. The new metal panels are part of Ford's national design image. It's more of a brushed metal look, so it's gonna look more like...
Do you have a copy there? Can you pass it around, maybe to those who hadn't seen it in the email?
Like a stainless, or is there a brushed aluminum effect, or?
Can you hold it up?
Say if he, the camera could probably zoom in on it by the thing.
Computer, but I...
Why don't we hold it up so the camera...
Yeah, I got it. Oops! There we go.
Should give it to the mayor, and he'll hold it up and kind of zoom in on it.
Ah, okay. I can see it now.
But I couldn't tell whether that was a metallic.
You'll have to turn it around for the camera to see.
I thought they were coming with this one.
Oh, I don't, there you go. Yeah, they did.
Nice job.
So it's same kind of metal panel system. It's a much more current, better detailed metal panel system. It's, looks like a brushed stainless steel kind of a metal panel. There's a new kind of corporate identity in that entrance gateway that you see, the new, more polished, refined Ford logos. We're removing some of the signage that's on the building right now. Currently, it says Ron Terrapelli Ford on both sides. We're just having a Terrapelli on one side, and then the two Ford logos.
Yeah, I think the old version was in your package.
Yeah, it is. Dropping the glass up there, taking that out.
So the commission reviewed it and thought it was very, very good, and recommends approval of the amended site plan to the board.
Second.
Okay, Julie Roelkall.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Gronn?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Thanks a lot.
Mayor Ford Roberts, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number two stands approved. Moving right along, number three, consideration for approval of an ordinance amending and clarifying the village of Shorewood Code of Ordinances with regard to certain definitions of fueling stations. This is up for a first read, trustee Fitzgerald and Kimberly Jones.
Yeah, actually, items three and four are very similar. One just suggests an amendment or proposes an amendment to the definition for fueling station, and the other one for service stations. The reason for this is that it was, had been our interpretation all along that, you know, developments such as truck stops and truck plazas would also fit in, you know, would not be included within this original definition, which was in your packet. Planning and zoning reviewed the additional clarification and confirmation of this that legal council drafted up and agreed with it, and recommends that the village board adopt the additional verbiage in the definition, which basically says a truck stop, travel plaza consists of a diesel fueling station with at least five fueling stations with bays wide enough and tall enough for semi-trucks, operated in combination with all or some of the following: convenience stores, semi-truck parking, weighing scales, and restaurants. And so automobile fueling stations for item number three, and then for item number four on the agenda would be service stations, do not include truck stops and travel plazas, which are commercial facilities that provide fuel, parking, and other services primarily to semi-trucks. So anyway, so basically, we're amending or proposing, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends clarifying the definition that fueling stations and service stations do not include truck stops and travel plazas. Anybody has any questions? We have legal counsel here, also Kimberly. Did I forget anything? Is it, okay?
The only question I had, maybe I missed it in reading, service station literally does not sell gas then, correct? It's a fueling station once they sell gasoline?
No, both of them sell gas.
But I didn't see it in the definition of service station, unless when I read it, I just missed it.
The current, the current definition for a service station is for basically services of your vehicle, such tires, batteries, minor accessories. It does not necessarily include fueling.
Okay, so can it or can it not, because it doesn't say that they can sell gasoline? It says they can do all those other things, but it doesn't say they can sell gasoline.
Yeah.
I mean, I...
I think a service station was, did not include fuel, right, Kimberly?
The way our current definition is, and the way I read it, it doesn't, it does not include gasoline as part of the definition of a service station.
It was for accessories and things like yours.
Because this is something that's hard to find anymore, that when people are traveling with, like, gas stations or service stations are open a lot more hours than most of your other type of tire stores or whatever else. But when somebody has, that needs a quick brake job, or they need an alternator, or they need something else, that to have a bay that can service them is, you know, as well as the gas station, because sometimes the gas portion is a, or less pays the rent for the other stuff that they're doing in the garage portion.
Well, fortunately, there's other areas around that can accommodate those, traffic-wise and everything, that would be able to service those and provide that service to those people.
Where's them?
No, but I think what Jim means...
None in town here, that's what I meant.
No, I, it's confusing. The same thing I was asking, if somebody did go in to get something done service-wise, and they happen to think, well, while I'm here, should I gas up? That's all I was thinking, but...
Well, technically, the automobile service station should also be, a lot of that should be moved into the automobile fueling station. Those, a lot of that wording should be combined, because automobile service station is also, could also be a fueling station, too. Well, I think they were trying to dress...
Early on, they had two, they were trying to address two separate kinds of things.
I know what we're trying to not include.
Right.
I just, when you read it, it doesn't seem like, okay, you can go in and get service. You need spark plugs or whatever, but you can't get gasoline in that particular, you've got to go somewhere else. You got to go to a fueling station. Just seems like, doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I mean, essentially, both of those uses, an automobile fueling station and repair station, are both permitted uses in the B4. So if somebody wanted to provide a gas station and a service station, we would, you know, review that if it was new construction. They're both permitted, so it is common, some gas stations will also have a service station option. We do allow that, so...
Okay, so they would just have to, when they file their building permit or whatever?
Well, they'd actually just fall under both these pair of definitions.
Right, they would just, they would indicate, you know, we're a service station as well as a fueling station, and so we would know that there's those two uses.
They can be combined then, no problem.
Or they can be very separate.
It was just meant to accommodate if somebody did want a separate one, yeah.
All righty. Well, thank you for answering my question.
Okay. Okay, unless there's any additional comments or questions, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending and clarifying the village of Shorewood Code of Ordinances with regard to certain definitions, fueling stations, and waive the second read.
Second.
Julie Roelkall, please.
Gronn?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Item number three stands approved. Moving on to number four, the other side of this. Like, take that, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Right, this one amends the specific ordinance with regard to service stations, so I would make a motion to approve an ordinance amending and clarifying the village of Shorewood Code of Ordinances with regard to certain definitions, service stations, and waive the second read.
And another second.
Julie Roelkall, please.
McDonald?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Gronn?
Yes.
Item number four stands approved. Moving on to number five, consideration for approval, the scope of services by Hitchcock Design Group for Westshore Park OzLED grant improvements, trustee Swart.
Thank you, Mayor Chapman. I hope everybody had the opportunity to read through the scope of services. Eric Hornig is with us from Hitchcock Design Group tonight, if anybody has any additional questions, other than what you have in front of you.
I've, parking is a big concern that I've got down there.
Eric, do you want to come up?
Also, Jim, can you explain?
Well, if you, down there, that road ain't very wide, very...
Oh, okay, just from the road.
Right, and I mean, the way we're looking at this is what I meant. I didn't see where there was any designated, there is some spots over here. I don't have a whole extension of how far down that goes.
Could you talk a little bit about parking considerations?
Sure. So this is definitely something that we talked about. It's not in the grant project. Parking is not a part of that project, but we had recently discussed putting some parallel parking kind of a little bit further to the east, and I think we came up with about 14 stalls?
Yeah, 14, 15.
Yeah, I seen where it looked like there was something designated farther. I take that's what those lines are on there.
Correct.
To the east of what the project is there. The project we're talking about just kind of entailed the dotted line, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Does that take it all the way down to around the open space at Route 59?
Narrow down, yeah, down.
It does not.
Or doesn't?
It's a little more of what you refer to Westshore Park proper as the, and I know why it's confusing. A while back, we applied for a trail grant, which was kind of the eastern stretch that connected up near Route 59, and that was not funded.
Right.
Nobody's project was funded, just so you know. And then this piece was the OzLED, which was a little bit west, and so that's the piece that's funded.
Because it gets, after you pass Garden Terrace, the street gets pretty narrow. That's why I didn't know if we were coming back in or something with some kind of a parking somewhere, you know? To park right on the street, you've got like almost a one-lane road then.
We got two nine-foot lanes down there, Jim, and actually with the MFT project, well, not with the MFT project, with our money that we contribute to the MFT project, we were actually going to do a Class D patch on that side and add up another nine feet to that road. For parking along there, on Westshore.
Because I know, going up the hill is wide, what is the width there?
Right, that's what I said, after Garden Terrace, it gets...
They could park in there, too, you know?
Right, well, a lot of it used to park nose-in even, which they stuck out kind of...
Parallel parking along the road. You'll have probably somewhere around seven... Parallel parking along the road. You'll have probably somewhere around seven spaces, eight spaces before the stop sign, then you'll probably pick up another seven after the stop sign. Their street project goes all the way to picnic.
Eric, what's the overall timeframe you're looking at?
Yeah, so the bulk of our work would start pretty much immediately. Actually, the surveyor is supposed to be on site tomorrow. And then the bulk of our work will be completed this fall. And really, the tricky part is because we're getting in the, in the river with a fishing station. It's the permitting, and so we have kind of a Corps of Engineer, IDNR, Office of Water Resources window. But our drawing will be wrapped up by October is what we're thinking. We'll submit and hopefully get enough comments back that we could go out to bid early in the year and start construction next year and finish in the summer next year. Shouldn't be an extremely lengthy construction process.
You know, for years, those, that property along that river was in private hands and now it's finally in our hands. And, you know, we've, we've got a strategical to, you know, return that access to the public domain, and this is it.
We were actually talking about today, we got to start thinking about replanting some of them oak trees.
No kidding? That's great.
They're starting to, you know, reach their maturity, so before they're all gone, we should start planting them. So the future has some.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Usually we don't talk about long growing trees like that. That's a whole other subject, but I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, I'm sorry if it's in here, but the future board involvement during this process, will there be any additional, again, looks that we're going to get at your plans as they go along?
We, we didn't plan on coming to present to you, but we can certainly give you packet information as often as you would like.
Something like that.
We can come back if you want us to, too.
Yes, because one time at one of the IMRL conventions, I talked to people and stuff with the core up there and how the old river used to be when they used to put up the temporary dam with the boards. And they claimed like we didn't have to go through the core to do that at that time, but I don't know what status on that. And I was just wondering if that, that would raise the water level, you know, in the back, and yet if you had rain or something, that thing would go down, you know, instantaneously to, which it wouldn't entail a whole lot of money to create one of those type of dams, you know, cable dams again to, that were across or some of any more to even do with vinyl, like a rubber thing, you know, too, and then it flattens out when.
Boy, I would, I would probably like to lean on my civil engineer, which is Christopher Burke, for that kind of a question, but to the best of my knowledge, if you touch the water, you gotta, you have a process to deal with.
Wait for the dry season. Here we are.
Yeah, I know.
And don't touch it.
It'll be all rain next year, right?
Okay, any more questions for Eric? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the scope of services by Hitchcock Design.
I'll make the motion to approve the scope of services by Hitchcock Design Group in the, excuse me, the amount of $57,300.
Okay, Julie Roelkall, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
First step, first step in a journey of a thousand miles, right? Moving on to our final item of business, consideration for approval of a bid award for custodial services at the Village Hall, the Police Department, and the Public Works Facility to GSF Cleaning and Support Services. Mr. Berrill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We went out to bid for a cleaning service at the Village Hall, Police Station, the Public Works Facility. With grouping them all together like that, we did come up with a pretty good savings over what we were doing before, roughly $8,646 worth of savings. Another neat thing about this company, it's a, they use green products for sustainability, so it's another nice thing that they have, offers the green side of it. Called around, checked their references, everything checked out real good. They do a county sheriff's facility, juvenile facility up north. They do another municipality. They also do the Sears Corporate Center. They do Sears. And so hopefully they'll be, do a little nicer job than what we have now, and we'll keep on them. So our recommendation would be to go ahead with this. If you have any other questions?
When will it take effect?
Our last, people, when's their thing end or whatever?
They would, they would be starting August 6th or 7th.
That's when the other one ends?
I'll make a motion to go with GSF Cleaning and Support Services for, that's a year cleaning for $37,674.
And that's all three buildings?
Yes, all three buildings, yeah.
That's it.
Okay, Julie Roelkall, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
And number six stands approved. We'll move on to committee reports. Trustee Dan Anderson, Public Works Committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, Black Road Sewer Line Force Main, Force Main Project with Joliet. They've pretty much got a pipe in the ground. We're going to be seeing some restoration in about two weeks, and then they'll repair the road the rest of the way. They'll have to replace the curb or the shoulder all the way down, so I don't know how far in they'll go, you know. But in about two weeks, we should hopefully have that done. That's scheduled to be done in August. That's the contract, so hopefully we'll have that out of the way. The Black Road and River Road intersection is all black top. The final surface is on it striped, looks good. Waiting on, what, poles, I guess?
Yep, signal poles.
Waiting on those. And then electrical work will be finished and put in. Let's see, MFT's moving along, curb work's done, black top is going down. Water restrictions, everybody knows we're in the drought. Odd and even based on your address, 6 to 10 a.m. and p.m. is when you can water.
Except for new landscaping, I think, what are the exemptions?
New landscaping, I think they can go for 10 days, yes.
Yeah, because there's.
Also, you can water your garden, flower or vegetable garden as much as you need to.
Yeah, there was a, a house that had been sitting on the market in the corner of my subdivision for several years, you know, I don't know what, why it was like that, but somebody had just purchased it. They came in and put a lot of money into landscaping and if there was any questions, I want to say, welcome to the neighborhood.
Yep.
You can water your landscaping.
Yeah, so the water restrictions are still in place. We're in good shape. You know, we're not, we don't see any ban or anything right now, so we're.
Those are year round, anyway.
Yeah, that's true. But we can still ban them if we needed to, so. But we don't see that coming. Water reminder, we get the water rate study with Public Works this Thursday here at 7 o'clock. The Village Hall will be in the conference room. There's also a police pension meeting this Thursday, but I, I'm not going to be able to attend. I don't know, Dan, if you can go if you're coming here.
Better come here for the.
Yeah, I didn't, so I already, you know, told them that I wasn't going to be there, but that's fine. That's at the Villa, or the Police Station for the Police Pension at 7 over there. And then the last thing I have is the mosquito spraying is going to be tonight, so you'll hear the sprayers out. Oh, one other thing. The Forest Main has got started that grant that we got to relocate the Forest Main. Yeah, and so I wrote it 59. It's, the work started on there this week, too.
Our shallow wells that we got on the other side, have we cut down any on what volume we're taking out of them or?
Nope.
They're still holding pretty good at what they were after all the water blasts, everything else, whatever we've done into them with the?
Yeah, and with lowering, lowering the pumps on them too, that made a big difference, so.
Okay. Secondly, too, I don't know what kind of storm damage we got in the village today. I don't know if they're, if we're going to have anything, if there is picking up any branches and stuff, I know.
Minimal, I think.
Yeah, we've been picking up all day, so.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Gary Fitzgerald, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Just one item. The next regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be at 7 p.m. next Wednesday, August 1st, here in the Village Hall. At this point, we have only one item on the agenda, yet another text amendment regarding fencing, so stay tuned for that. But that, that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Dan Grant, Finance and Budget.
No report tonight.
Okay. And of course, we all hope you're feeling better. We know you.
Thank you.
Had some work.
Yep, a little tune up.
Trustee Brockman, Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Only report is no meeting July or August for Citizens Advisory and hope to see everyone in September. That's it, thank you.
Trustee Schwartz, Parks and Recreation.
The only thing I have to report tonight is this Thursday, July 26th, we will have the movie Happy Feet 2 in the Town Center Park, and it will begin probably a little bit earlier than they have been since some, you know, sets getting earlier and earlier, so.
About two minutes.
Of course, this morning, they could have had it at 6:30 this morning. It was so blackout, but approximate start time would probably be about 6, 8:30 to 8:45.
And the Crossroads Fest coming up, right?
August.
And they're still, they're still accepting volunteers.
August 3rd, 4th, and 5th, that weekend for the, for the festival.
The parade will be, what, Sunday the 5th and?
Fireworks are Saturday night. Correct? Okay.
With a lot of fire trucks standing by.
Countering.
But, Jim, you got anything?
Yes, Rick. I would like to, I know most of the citizens we've probably seen where there was an agreement with the Will Electric Aggregation Group, but to beware of people coming around signing you up for things because that has not been something that we've got anybody out there doing to my knowledge at the present time. And I've heard this from different localities that people are out there.
Knowledge is correct. We have nobody out there.
That most of these are like, you might say, I won't say they're con artists because they're probably representing the company all right, but it has not, nothing to do with our program.
Right. I actually had one come to my door. My wife asked me, was it somebody from us? You know, I told her, no, you didn't sign anything, did you? But on that, because I represent the village on that Will Electric Committee, and we're picking up First Energy, that'll be our supplier. And it'll, it's a two-year contract we got, but we believe when we settled in at that, that from the rate that Kamau was quoting or will be under July, under July bill of eight point something, what we settled in with, with First Energy is 4.82. So it's a matter of about a 42% savings on the production cost of the power. Now, that's all subject to change.
Supply costs.
Yeah, well, the, the production cost.
Oh, yeah, you're the ga, you're from the gas guy, yeah.
Production cost.
Yeah.
So, right, that's okay? But at any rate, unless, unless those rates change, which they will, they'll bounce around. I mean, that's the original start to the savings, so hopefully we maintain that. Not only that, First Energy is a absolute green supplier. They supply with solar, wind, and nuclear.
But the bid is, is 0% mix though, the one we're accepting, right, at the point 42 something?
Yeah.
Okay.
So at any rate, that's, that's where we settled in. It's a two-year lock, so if, as Mr. McDonald says, you get somebody coming to your door, be very careful on anything that you sign, no matter what is set. You really could get yourself locked in and with a cost to buy back out if all of a sudden you realize our rates. The group, we've got a group, we've got attorneys on board, we've got a committee, a large committee, and we got the Will County Governmental League watching this on a continuous basis. So unless you're going to do that yourself individually, it's probably a good deal if you just kind of stick with the aggregation group. But everybody needs to make up their own mind, right? At any rate.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Julie Roelkall for adjournment.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
McDonald. Schwartz.
Were adjourned. Have a nice night.